All right, so we are here to talk about the 2024 Budget Supplemental. This is our first supplemental and of course, we're online. So this is our first time on here. So we have a lot of people joining us as well from departments and budget office as well to chime in if there's specific questions at the end. So I'm going to go through the presentation and then at the end of the presentation, I am actually going to go over a summary of the packages that have been proposed. So if you hit the next slide, please. So the goal for today is to present the budget request and the county manager's recommendations for the 2020 Fall Budget Supplemental. And the second goal is to receive council feedback prior to the October 20th public hearing regarding these budget submissions. Next slide. Just to go over the process a little bit and you can go to the next slide, please. Pursuant to RCW 36.40, this allows for supplemental budget appropriations as needed throughout the budget year. Specific situations where budget supplemental budget requests are warranted include any unforeseen situation that puts the safety and welfare of the residents of Clark County at risk, any unforeseen situations which hinders the ability of a department or office to fulfill a statutory obligation, labor contract settlements, legal settlements, or other judgment settlements that exceed the amounts currently available in the current budget, or unforeseen revenue sources that are associated with expenditures such as grants. Next slide, please. So the calendar staff, if you haven't known, I know I talked to the council weekly and usually budget's part of that, but staff have been working on these requests for quite some time and they submitted their submissions in the middle of August. As soon as they did that, the budget office, and this all was done in our new Questica system. So this is our first year without a manual budget process. And I have heard back from a lot of departments that the software is very intuitive and user-friendly. But they produce reports for us to review. So I reviewed them with the budget office, with the finance team, and then I did meet with some departments to just discuss their packages a little bit more in detail. And currently, right now, we're on the work session and then the next milestone date again is the October 20th public hearing date. Next slide, please. For the 2020 Fall Supplemental Packages, we received a total of 51 budget requests. These decision packages were received to include maintaining service levels, infrastructure upkeep, revenue forecasts, and recognizing items that have no impact to fund balance. If you remember last year, we did change the supplemental process and this was in conjunction from going from a two-year budget to a one-year budget and having this strictly be things that could not wait into the next budget year since we're on annual budget. So a lot of these are previously approved by the council, technical adjustments, none of them are things that we could put off until the 2021 budget. Next slide, please. So there are actually six types of requests. Five are listed here, previously approved by the council. So these requests have come to the council during a council meeting, do a staff report, and have been approved since the last budget process. Budget neutral, so these are ones that recognize revenues and associate expenses. This could be like grants, so we have the revenue coming in with the expense. Carry forward, these would be items that are specific, project specifics that were part of the 2019 budget that were either the project was not completed or services haven't been completed or products haven't been received. So it's just forwarding those budget requests to the 2020 budget. And technical adjustments, these are correcting budget coding. We've had some going from the manual budgeting process to Questica, there have been a couple, like a handful of things that we need to fix in coding. One that's not on here, but I want to, and of course, new requests. But one that's not on here that I do want to call out is budget interventions. So these are change requests that are submitted to recognize efforts and additional efficiencies and additional cost savings at departments. While this is not included in this presentation, I do want to recognize that we have actually done a lot of budget interventions this year due to COVID. Departments have saved about $4.5 million and I'll talk about that in a later slide. I do want to call that out even though it's not part of this official budget process. As you can see on the type of request, we did have all the 51, 12 were previously approved, eight are budget neutral, three are the carry forwards, six technical adjustments, and 22 new requests. Next slide, please. Okay, so you can go to the next one as well. So out of the 51 packages, I am recommending that all 50 are considered, or 51 are considered moving forward in the supplemental. Just for your information, for general fund component packages, just about half or just less than half of those have a general fund component. Next slide, you can go forward to. So talking about impacts to funds. So if all of the recommended packages are approved by the council, the net decrease in the total fund balance for all county funds would be about $2.68 million in 2020 and only 582,000 ongoing. General funds specifically for 2020 would be a $1.9 million and ongoing is about 267,000. The next two slides actually show the impact by fund. You can scroll down. So you can see that 1.9 million for the fund balance change for 2020 for general funds and then the 267. We, as you know, we have a lot of funds in the county and these are, these are a summary of them. I think it'll make more sense when I go over the decision packages of how these impacts on event center has an impact and a lot of that's due to COVID. Health department obviously has some, you know, there's lots of grants, moving pieces and stuff. And so when I go over the decision packages, you'll see how these funds may be related directly to those decision packages. Please move forward. And one more. So I did want to call out on here, general funds specifically. So the total budget, not just for general fund, is about 547 million. The general fund is about 181 million, which is about 33% of our budget, the county's total budget. On this slide, you can see the revenue and the expense for general fund and the breakdown. The revenue is approximately a third of sales tax, property tax, and all other revenues. And then on the expense side, 70% is about 70% is salaries and benefits of the general fund, 18% is services, and 15% is supplies. If you have questions in between, please let me know. I'm more than happy to answer questions as we go through this. Okay, if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is general fund specific. So as mentioned, it's a $9 reduction in 2020 and $267,000 ongoing. The current minimum fund balance per policy, and this is calculated by the auditor's office annually, is $26.3 million. That's actually shown at the very bottom of this, right above the projected available fund balance. Our beginning fund balance this year is 36.66 million. You can see what the total adopted revenue expenses are at the top there. Due to COVID this year, which is completely unprecedented, we had to revisit and try to reevaluate our budget for 2020. That is not usually normal during a normal budget year. Usually we have our adopted budget and then we just have updates as they come up, like with revenues, grants, and that kind of stuff. This, we truly had to go back and sit down and strategically find a way to see how this is going to impact the 2020 current adopted budget and make adjustments. So due to this, there is anticipation. You can see the first three items there have reductions. It's a reduction for sales tax, charges for goods and services and other revenues. As of today, and this can change, sales tax revenue reduction is approximately 2 million. That's what we're anticipating for 2020, mostly due to COVID-19. While this seems like a big hit, it is a lot better than what we had originally anticipated. People are either not going across the river and buying things or they're buying more things online because our, we're coming in pretty good even though it is a reduction. But with that said, I want to caution you, we still don't know what's going to happen in the fall. So we are, the finance team has been diligently working on this, reviewing actuals, looking at our cash forecast, cash analysis, to make sure that we have plans in place to address them as they come up, as we get the actuals coming in. You can see the charges for goods and services is a $4.1 million reduction and then other revenues is a $2 million reduction. Again, most of these are due to COVID and the response on there. The savings, the next three lines, so the next two or next one, the 4.5 million, that's due to, go back up, please. Thank you. The 4.5 million, that was due to departments and that's where that other type of budget supplemental could happen. But we reached out to departments right away and asked to implement a hiring freeze except for essential personnel, eliminate non-essential spending, and really just cut back right away. All the departments stepped up and really helped out and that is that $4.5 million savings right there to help offset that reduction. As we're looking at what things are trending and looking like, it looks like we're going to have potentially a $6 million savings just due to staff actions. That 1.4 is the difference between the two. So it could be from vacancy savings. It's, that's other savings that we're having that weren't specifically identified in that process that we did with departments. So I do have to like, really say the departments really stepped up and did what we could to get through this year in those savings. We are anticipating savings and contingency based on the trends that we're seeing right now of a million dollars. We do have a line item there for 6 million for CARES Act funding. This does not include any future CARES Act funding that we may receive. It's included what we already know we can get. The non-spendable encumbered invoices, the 1.2, and also the assigned fund balance items compensated, these are not included in the budget, but we do need to recognize these as part of impact to our fund balance. The auditor's office is the ones that actually calculate these every year. So the non-spendable encumbered invoices are items that we know we're going to have to spend based on commitments. And then the compensated absences, I believe is 25% if everybody left that could retire. So these are leave cash outs. So that is just a booking on the books to identify 25% of that. And Mark can chime in if I have missed anything and actually anybody can, but I believe that this was a conversation with the council previously and they agreed with the auditor's office that 25% was the appropriate amount to recognize there. So the light blue on there is the 2020 Fall Supplemental Change Request, separate out by the one time and the ongoing against 1.6 million for one time and 267. So what does this say? So we have the projecting ending fund balance at 33.7 million. Again, our minimum fund balance is 26, so we are showing an available fund balance of seven point, just under 7.4 million for this year. Again, just caution, this could change as we continue to receive revenues and monitor expenses moving forward. I'll talk a little bit more about that 7.4 because it can look a little deceiving, but we need to look at the six-year forecast and see how that fits into there. So we'll, that's on a slide coming up, so we'll get there in just a sec. Is there any questions right now before I move on from this slide?
Madam Chair, if I may, I wanted to go back towards the top, under other modifiers, the sales tax revenue loss, I understand. The other revenue projected loss of 2 million and then the charges for goods and services is listed as a revenue loss of 4,110,000. Could you go into a little bit more detail on what the other revenue loss was and the revenue loss for charges of goods and services? I'm not sure how that's laid out.
So some of them are fines, fees, jail bed revenues. That's probably one of the largest ones because as you know, our jail bed population has decreased significantly at the beginning of COVID. So those I think are the main drivers. Any other questions? Okay.
Kathleen, just before you go on, so that would have been, the answer to that question relates to both the 4.1 and the 2 million are, you're, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. So we just wanted to chat a little bit about the general fund forecast of revenue assumptions. So the 2020 revenue, we are assuming right now approximately an $8 million loss between all of those revenue sources coming in, mostly due to COVID. For 2021, for the revenue forecast, we are looking at doing mostly flat right now, just so that we can see how we're going to end this year and if it continues into next year. So instead of having a, an increased growth amount for revenue for next year, we're being a little bit more cautious until we get some more actuals to the end of this year. So right now, the budget for 2021 is going to be reflecting mostly a flat revenue rate. The future years, starting in 2022, will start going again with those projected growth amounts. And you can see the percentages there that we've, that we've seen historically and that you've seen historically on the six-year forecast on the, between the property taxes and the other revenue sources coming in and putting together those future growth rates. So that will start in 2022. Next slide, please. So this is the just expense assumption. So the 2020 expenses currently reflect what was adopted, less the anticipated savings from the submitted budget reduction scenarios. The 2020 currently reflected baseline calculations in Questica. So we're just taking what's baseline expenses right now and moving them forward. And again, in 2022, we'll start having some of those inflationary rates that will continue. Some of the salaries obviously are going to have those rates for the next year's budget because a lot of them are bargained through the collective bargaining agreements. Okay, next slide. This is the six-year forecast. I know it's a little small there, but the far left block is the current year budget for 2020. That's our, the baseline there. You can see the beginning fund balance, the total budget revenue of 178, 178 million, total budget expenses is 181. So this is what, it's a more condensed version of the slide, two slides before. So you can see the ending, projected ending fund balance of 7.4 million. As we look to 2021, a couple of things I do want to call out on this one, you can see that the revenues are dropping from 178 to 172. This is due to one-time revenues that were in the 2020 budget. For example, we had a $5 million railroad projects that were in there. So if there's any one-time revenue, whether it's a grant or specific funding for a specific project that was recognized and approved by the councils one time, those come off of that revenue forecast for next year. So that is the reason for that decrease. And expenditures is the same thing, if they have associated expenditures. As you can see, while we can see the 7.3 next year, and I also call out in 2021, this does not reflect any budget changes for 2021. And I will note, we have more than 200 requests coming in. They may not all hit general fund and they won't, and we're starting that process now. So this amount does not include any changes to general fund. This is not adding services, not adding anything for next year. That projected ending fund balance is 1.1 million. And as you can see moving forward, you can also see where by the next year, that's a negative projected fund balance. These also do not include the 1% property tax. That will be discussed during the 2021. We don't want to put that number in there. That is about 700,000 a year and it does compound over a year. So one thing I want to emphasize on this that, you know, I've heard this since I've been here too, that every year, you know, the sky is falling, we need to find money. But every year, we have been having to do savings in order to get, come within budget. And so this has really hindered the county's ability to look longer term and to look at capital projects. I know last year, the council did approve some money for capital projects and some facilities because we have been deferring a lot of things that we shouldn't have that's going to end up costing us more money because we've been in this mode of, okay, what do we need to cut or save to get us to the next budget? And then we come in and we have one-time savings and then one-time savings, but it's truly because departments are continually going through this exercise. So something we need to really consider, and I would ask the council to consider moving forward is, yes, still look at efficiencies, how can we reduce expenses? But the other one is how can we maximize on our revenue sources and looking at all opportunities because you can't, we want to maintain service levels. You know, that's acceptable to our community, but we, I think that, that change of mindset. So for that 7.4 million, as we're looking for next year and future years, I think we need to be really strategic on what is approved for next year and moving forward, or do we need to start putting money aside to help offset that negative moving forward? This is ongoing, it's always being updated, but it will change how I think departments and the council, how we're going to think about this moving forward because it, like I said, instead of doing these one-time years, and this is taking COVID out of it, this was an anomaly. This is not something that hopefully we're going to have again, but historically, that's what we've been doing every year, is doing budget reduction exercises for the following year and just getting into the budget moving forward so that, I just want to make sure that, you know, we can maintain what our existing services are and what does that level look like. We're going to have to have some really tough conversations and we will be with all the departments so that other electeds and other departments can share, you know, what their essential services are, what's mandated services, and what's an acceptable level under that mandated service, and how does that fit within our long-term financial strategic plan? And like I said, this also includes capital facilities and other things to make sure that we're planned for the future and that we can actually focus now more on being proactive instead of reactive and change that mindset. Is there any specific questions on this six-year forecast? Or is there anything that anybody on the finance team want to add that I haven't touched on?
Kathleen, I would just add to consider that, that gray line, that available fund balance really is like a one-time bucket. It shouldn't be used for anything that's ongoing as far as expenses.
Questions to the council?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment on, on this slide because I remain fairly firmly convinced that there, there really is no solution here other than being able to retain some of our sales tax that we otherwise sent to Olympia. You know, our, the sales, the tax structure across the state is pretty uniformly supportive of every county except for ours, where we lose about 25% of that one-third, our pillar on our stool of revenue, we lose every year. If, if we could just imagine having an additional 25 million and that sales tax grows about 2, 2.5% every year, if we had that in our general fund, in our revenue stream, back adding it in, it would change this slide dramatically. It would remove the structural deficit. And you know, that, that's the message I think we need to keep telling our local legislative delegation. I know it's such a hard pull, especially this year, but that really is the only fair way to move forward without increasing taxes across our population. We just are suffering as a result of being right next door to a metropolitan no-tax state.
Well said. We need to make that a legislative priority every single session, I think. I think we just, I actually believe that our legislators probably understand this, but we need to help them understand it even more. And it just won't happen overnight, but I think that if, if it were pressed each year and somebody's willing to carry that bill, we should do it.
Yeah, I would agree with that and it's going to, it's not going to happen overnight. I think one thing we have to be aware of in terms of a political environment with regard to an ask like that is that we have to show also that we're, that we're taking advantage of the opportunities we have given to us right now. And that includes, you know, this levy and, and unwillingness to ask for 1%, but ask the state for some sort of dispensation is going to be difficult. So I think we have to make sure that we're, that we understand what we're asking our community to do when we ask for a levy increase and we, and we communicate clearly what it is that they get and what county government does for them and the deal that they're getting in terms of Clark County. So I agree, I think we need to continue to ask the state, but we also have to make sure that we're doing everything we can here to provide the revenue for the resources, for the services that we provide.
As I understand it, however, these taxes already come in here. We just send more back to the state. Therefore, doing, you know, stating that we, we, you know, take this opportunity to inflict another 1% on our constituents is not the answer. The answer is be able to keep part of what they're already giving and have the state allow us to keep what our constituents already pay and not have to send it back.
Go ahead, John. In the last two or three years I've been in Olympia, anytime we've asked for money, the first question from any senator or representative has been, have you taken your local options? And if we've said no, then the conversation is over right there. We have, we need 25 votes in the senate to get some kind of sales tax benefit back to us. And there's 46 senators that don't care at all because it's not their district. So I think it's a good ask to keep working on it, but to think that we're going to somehow magically find a majority of senators or representatives that want to give money back to Clark County with no benefit to their own districts, I think it's a pipe dream.
And I'll add that I support that, what Council Blom and Olson are saying, you know, counties have fewer tools than cities for revenue, but we should be using the tools that we have to support the services that we offer our community. And further, yes, we should absolutely keep pushing the state, but in the meantime, we need to make a budget balance here and provide service to the community. So while we are doing that pushing, we nonetheless need to figure out how to make it work.
Okay, any other questions on this slide before I move on? And we'll continue these conversations, especially when we start talking about the 2021 budget and other conversations as they come up from the legislature. So at this time, I'd like to actually go over the list of the supplemental packages. So Tina or Rebecca, whoever's right, if you want to pull up just the, in case there's a question on a specific package. And I'll just go ahead and start. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go over them by like a category. So I'm going to start with previously approved by council and I'll go over these fairly quickly. But again, this is just a reminder that council has already approved these ones. I just want to put it back out there though, so that our community can hear this and it just was a reminder because you may not have remembered, or there may have been some tweaks to it. So the council previously approved the CARES Act funding expense authority to purchase 10 additional ballot boxes, and this was due to some changes due to COVID in schools and stuff. So that's already been approved. One-time expense for purchasing the jail body scanner, which we have confirmed that has been purchased. The reorg for community development to move GIS code enforcement, animal control, and fire marshal into the new code administration department. Just want to call out the actual savings for that move, looks like it's about $118,000. Repurpose existing funding to cover capital costs of a new animal control system and the code enforcement software. The general fund subsidy increase to building fund for land use review and wetland and habitat. So there was $600,000 in the budget, expense budget. We need to increase that by 400,000 for a total of 1 million. The council did approve the full 1 million designation in March of this year for that. So this is just getting them that expense capacity. Adjustments to the campus development fund to properly account for the lifeline crisis stabilization rent income. Event ticket project approved in 2019, it went over budget. So they asked for allocation of one-time expenses of 20,000 appropriation from the major maintenance fund. 1 million in the general fund of revenue to support facilities. This was also approved in March by the council. The one-time implementation for workday analytics and learning modules. Budget capacity regarding grant funding and staffing, CARES Act funding for food establishments. Budget capacity regarding grant funding and staffing, CARES Act funding for food establishments. And this was from CARES Act funding as well as about one point three six million. Some carryforward for REIT two, this is the twenty-five thousand dollars from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. This was in order to cover or to partner with the Friends of the Vancouver Lake to work on the water mill foil in Vancouver Lake. We spent twenty-five thousand in twenty twenty. And then accept the sex offender address and residency verification program grant and add the budget capacity in the sheriff's office. So those are the ones that have already been previously approved by the council. Ones that are budget neutral, two of these are actually grants. Three are CARES Act funding and one was actually an insurance claim. So the CARES Act funding is expense authority for the assessors office to comply with the LNI and COVID regulation safety deadlines to support remote work and office area reconfiguration. And then the second one is the Washington State Administrator Officer of the Courts AOC CARES Act funding, public safety expenses related to district court expenditures incurred and had anticipated to the end of the year in direct response to the COVID nineteen. This includes items such as jail booths, Zoom virtual court and other areas on which they can maximize because courts have to continue during this time. And how can we do that and keep everyone safe? And then the third CARES Act under the budget neutral is the public health update expenditure account codes related to indoor cost allocation. Again, there's two grants under the budget neutral. Both of these were in community services. So it's just adding additional budget authority for the increase in grant funding for existing services to support individuals with developmental disabilities. And the second one is also the budget authority for increased grant funding for existing services to support individuals with immediate housing needs. And then again, we had one insurance claim under budget neutral. This is budget authority to replace a damaged fiber optic interconnect communications, the design and construction. There was a contractor that actually damaged the existing fiber optic line. And so it's a hundred thousand dollars, but it is offset by an insurance claim, so it's budget neutral. Budget carryforwards, we have two from Public Works. The first one is regarding the fleet acquisition. They were approved to replace seventy-one vehicles beginning in January of twenty nineteen. By December, end of December twenty nineteen, the vehicles and equipment ordered from the Washington Department of Enterprise Services had not been delivered. So this is rolling it forward, the one point four million to continue with those purchases as needed. And they're also requesting a carryforward for the twenty nineteen budget associated with purchase of a thermoplastic cart, which was about eighty-five thousand dollars. Technical adjustments, as I mentioned, I don't know if the last, Emily can correct me, four, five years, six years, it's been an annual or a manual budget process, which, as you can imagine, it's spreadsheets and spreadsheets because we have thousands of line items of coding. And so moving from that to an automated system with Questica, we had four things that have to be cleaned up that didn't move over as nicely or there were some issues with the converting from the manual process to Questica. So one was restoring baseline budget capacity for left, which is the law enforcement officers and firefighters retirement. One was restoring baseline budget for already approved positions. This one was a natural resource specialist, it didn't convert. Eliminating duplicate budget in the permit center division, there is also an error with that conversion. And restoring baseline budget for temporary seasonal employees in the MPD operations. The last technical adjustment that we have recommended for the council is just correcting a coding on transfers taking place between general fund and facilities. This does not impact any money, it's just a coding change that needs to happen. Now on to the new requests. We have an increased, so if you remember, there was an emergency supplemental budget hearing at the end of last year. I believe it was on New Year's Eve, it may have been the day before, for some unforeseen things that have, that came up that we needed to make adjustments. The auditor's office submitted a one-time one point five million dollar expenditure for increased employee healthcare program revenue expenses for inflation. That was one time, so that actually needs to be ongoing. And then the new request on top of that is a two hundred thousand dollar ongoing difference as well that needs to be aligned so that we can pay those invoices and have the capacity to do that. There was a reduction in the revenue budget for Calhoun Tribe by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. In the twenty twenty budget, this was based on a lump sum payment during years two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. The actual revenue estimate is about fifteen thousand dollars. So this is just updating based on what it's really going to be moving forward. So that is the the reduction for the revenue for the budget for Calhoun Tribe. Adjusting expenditure authority for the twenty twenty budget for Cressa, the interlocal agreement, an amount of about forty-nine hundred dollars, their budget is approved after ours. We will try to get more preliminary numbers on this in the future because we're, I know I'm on the Cressa board now and we're already talking about that. So we should know at least an estimate, I think, moving forward that we can help incorporate into the budget and help reduce this. But it was a twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred dollar increase. Reallocating the fire marshal and deputy fire marshal position to be funded majority of the general fund from the planning and code. So as we were looking at the reorg last year with code enforcement, we did realize that the deputy fire marshal and fire marshal were mostly paid out of the building fund. That's not a good place for them to be billed and actually could result in some audit concerns. So we want to align to where they should be. Mental health sales tax funds are being returned as they were unspent, as about a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Change funding source for downtown sidewalk engineering project from general fund to REIT two. Additional revenue to help support the event center and fair rooms. It's the fund that we're moving the money out of to help support as a working capital, seven point four million. So there's plenty of money there to help offset and help them during their, like not having the fair and other events that have been canceled. Budget increase pending authority from the VA to reallocate lease, excise lease tax portion of their money of their monthly rental payments to work on the HVAC system out at CCH. HR, they had risks come down into the department a couple of years ago and they've been reducing their staff as part of their budget reduction. So this is just reallocating the true cost centers for their FTE. CVTV expenditures, again, this is another one that we don't find out until after our budget is approved if they're going to have increases. So this has a twenty-nine thousand dollar impact for CVTV. IT expense, they have a couple on here for, one is, in my sprinkled, you can help me if I say this incorrectly. But I, expense budget capacity to allow for the purchase of an additional required hardware in twenty twenty. They have more cash than what's actually in the budget. Virtual servers run on one host. They had a memory capacity this year that was not anticipated and this is to add another host. Increased funding for medical examiner's office to cover immediate safety needs such as laundry service, PPE, cleaning, disinfectant practices, et cetera. We need to make sure that we're meeting safety guidelines with regards to those employees and how they're, based on their exposures at their work. A CARES Act funding request from IT, this was for expense and revenue budget capacity for about four hundred thousand. This was in direct response again to CARES Act and the COVID response, getting laptops to public health, to the PA's office, Adobe licenses to get people working from home. So this was a, will be a revenue and expense coming in from CARES Act. IT's requesting to fix some coding errors, TE and R and R collections for the fund fifty ninety-two and this server storage collections could result in an audit finding if we don't make these changes and correct how it should be funded. Law library increase in some indirect costs of about twelve thousand dollars. Prosecuting attorney's office has a grant, it's the STOP grant, the Stop Violence Against Women Formula grant. So this is requesting a point seven five deputy prosecuting attorney one, based on the award of that grant. Adjust labor budgets and controllable budget in the the medical examiner's office. They had an employee, they're, they don't have a lot of staff in the medical examiner's office. But yet, there's staffing, their work can increase without notice. They did have an employee who was on extended leave of absence. So they had to backfill that with a temporary, temporary employee to keep those services going. Because those are not services that we can delay. So this is to help offset some of those costs. Correct position budget allocation for shared positions between planning code and the road fund. This should have been a technical adjustment this year. It's due to the reorg in two thousand nineteen. It didn't translate to Questica during that implementation, so it's just cleaning that up. Update budget capacity for the park impact fee districts. Request to adjust baseline budget to align with the cash accordingly, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. Public Works is also asking for approved inspection staff direct charge allocation. This will help reflect current and proposed actual FTE distribution. Adjust the budget in clean water and county road fund, allowing for direct charge of staff time. Again, this will be more closely aligned with the twenty twenty capital project projections. And I could just let you know, Eva and her staff have been working really hard to really analyze their budget and to realize efficiencies just by doing these types of items of doing the direct costs instead of, allow them to project better in the future as well. Public Works is also asking to reallocate a planner to position that will better align with the actual use of staff time, focusing more on parks projects. And finally, an increase to the treasures, operations and maintenance fund, professional services budget by forty thousand, and this is to accommodate reimbursable recording costs that they incur. So that is the quick summary of all of the requests that are being recommended, all fifty-one. I think we have representatives from most departments and of course, Emily is here and others. If there's any specific questions on any of them that I can help answer or the departments can, I would open that up to the council.
Kathleen, to the council, I was just going to mention, sorry, that there's a detailed change request and it has, report that has all of the change requests in detail that you can look at, based, you don't have to look at the small list, but there's there's narratives on all of them too.
Yeah, and I think they're, they should be online. If we need to pull them up, we can.
Questions to the council, clarification?
Nope, don't see any, thank you.
Okay, well, that, I think, concludes this budget supplemental. If you do have any questions or need further clarification, please reach out. You know how to get ahold of me and we will work with departments. And again, I want to thank the departments for submitting and being mindful of our new process for the supplemental. And I want to thank Emily and her team because they're, I mean, this is our first time in Questica and it went really well. So I, but I know that there's a lot of work that goes in behind this. So I do want to thank the staff for their work in putting this together for the council.
Counsel also?
Yeah, and thank you Kathleen and and Emily. And I I also just want to reiterate how you started the conversation this morning and the four point five million dollars in interventions and and savings that staff and under your leadership and guidance has come up with. And so that certainly helps in these conversations about, you know, what are we doing with our revenues? And what are we doing with our with our budget? And so so I just want to say thank you for those efforts. And then also, it is kind of exciting to get this first budget in and not do it on spreadsheets. So looking forward to being a little bit more efficient in that way. So so thank you.
Yeah, I'm I'm excited that the new software is going well. That doesn't, that doesn't always happen. A lot of times we, when we have new software, it's kind of the opposite that we've had trouble with it. So that is, that is good. And I and I do appreciate the really deep dives that have gone out in various departments to be able to, to to do what we can, to make whatever savings that we can. So thank you all for that.
And speaking of, the budget office and IT are still working on implementing a new capital budgeting software. Because we have never done separate capital budgeting. But that will start, I believe, next spring and will not, and am I going to say this right? Is it going to be for the twenty twenty-three budget? Because we'll be doing, while we're doing twenty-two budgeting, is they're going to start.
Right, right, it's it's another module in Cap, in Questica, it's the capital module. And we will implement with Questica and we'll start in spring, but we'll we'll actually implement in September. And then we'll use it as part of the twenty twenty-three budget development.
Great, any other comments to the council?
Madam Chair, I, I. Counsel may continue. So with Kathleen and Emily, I would, if we could, in the next couple of weeks, schedule maybe an hour or two to go over some detailed questions I have regarding the first few slides, basically the overview of where our revenue losses are and what may have zeroed that out in our cost savings through the hard work. But also things like having less jail inmates, you know, we have less revenue coming in, but we certainly have a lot less expenses as well. So I I just wanted to focus a little bit more detail, if we could set up a one-on-one.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I guess we'll see you at ten thirty. We get to have a little break here, although, and and because this was basically posted as ten thirty council time, that's when we do have to meet, correct Kathleen?
I believe so, I don't have the hook. It says ten thirty, it doesn't say following work, then yes, it would be ten thirty.
Ten thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.